This special episode is a recording of a workshop that I led at Pasadena Mennonite Church on February 13th, 2022. Before we get into the actual recording, I first want to provide this rather substantial preface for context and other things. I'm offering this episode as an example of how the insights from this podcast series can be used in our modern church settings to help our churches join the movement, or engage more deeply in the movement, that Jesus, as reported in the New Testament Gospels, began 2,000 years ago. The movement to bring God's kingdom on earth as in heaven. Or using the language that I've been using in this podcast series, to bring about God's new society of justice and mercy, to build a new world in the shell of the old. Now, one important difference between the way I do this in the workshop and the story told in the Gospel of Matthew is context. The story of Jesus in the Gospel of Matthew takes place among peasants, in an ancient agrarian society that was under the occupation of a foreign power which brutally oppressed and exploited it. The oppression was so severe that there were constant attempts by the peasants to overthrow the provincial government in Jerusalem and throw off the yoke of Roman rule. Neither I nor most of the audience of my podcast is in a similar situation, although I do want to recognize that there may be some people who are listening who do find themselves under a brutal oppression or occupation. For those who find themselves in that situation, the story in Matthew is even more relevant. The call to carry the cross, to become enemies of the empire, even martyrs, may have more urgency. And even those of us in more privileged circumstances should not completely exempt ourselves from that sort of resistance in our struggle to bring about the new society of justice and mercy. I think about those who have participated in the plowshares movement, mostly white US citizens who have walked onto military bases in the US and started hammering on weapons, acting out the prophecy of Isaiah 2:1-5 that says that swords will be beaten into plowshares and spears into pruning hooks. As a consequence of their actions, they have suffered incarceration in US prisons. While not literally martyrdom, it is still a high price to pay for someone who can easily exempt themselves from any sort of action that will exact a high cost on them. These men and women of the plowshares movement have not let their privilege exempt them from carrying the cross. I think also of those who have volunteered with CPT. Until very recently, CPT stood for Christian Peacemaker Teams, but the name has very recently been changed to Community Peacemaker Teams. CPT volunteers enter into areas of conflict, risking their lives for peace and justice. You can read more about them at their website, cpt.org. At least two of them have lost their lives. During the short CPT delegation that I participated in, in which we went to the West Bank and Palestine, we found ourselves in the midst of a shooting war multiple times. CPTers there have been physically attacked, and I know of at least two activists with a partner group who have been killed. One run over by a bulldozer trying to stop a home from being demolished, and the other shot in the head. These last four martyrs that I've mentioned were all white Westerners, US and UK citizens, but they did not let their privilege exempt them from taking up the cross in the struggle for a new heavens and a new earth. Yet, as I've said in this podcast series, not everyone who joins the movement becomes a martyr. And there is a lot of work to be done that does not involve martyrdom. There are ways that we can serve each other and struggle for justice that don't involve sacrificing our lives. And if we live in a society that has some democracy, in which we have privilege and can make significant change through organizing and advocacy, then we should take advantage of that and not only think in terms of radical direct action. Even direct action, properly done, involves a lot of organizing, meetings and training and planning. While the Gospel story is dramatic and reaches its crescendo in the radical direct action of the cross, it also involves a lot of teaching and healing and debating the law with the ruling elites before that direct action takes place. And the martyrdom only occurs because the empire and its provincial governments cannot abide any dissent. Many of us don't find ourselves in that same sort of situation. I have engaged in both direct action and in campaigns that have achieved their goals merely through organizing and advocacy. In a place like the 21st century United States, both are needed. It may not seem as heroic, but in the work for justice, Zoom appointments, emails, research and planning are crucial. As I say at one point in the workshop, the road to justice is long, and it involves a lot of meetings. There is a lot of organizing in the struggle for justice, a lot of mundane work that needs to be done. And it can also be fun and creative. The workshop that I led and that you will hear was entitled "Speaking at City Council as Discipleship." I begin by explaining that synagogues in first century Israel were the town governments. So when Jesus is reported to have spoken there, it is like when we speak or testify at our city councils, except he was given more access than we normally are, which indicates that the synagogue system was perhaps more democratic in some ways than our city governments. And the synagogue system should be separated out from the provincial government and the empire. They weren't exactly the same. They interacted with each other, and certainly the provincial government had influence and exerted influence on the synagogue system, but the synagogue system was more the local government, much closer to the people. We may not have quite the access that Jesus had, but most of us are citizens of the countries we live in, or have the privilege of being able to speak out without fear of going to prison or being executed. With all his access, Jesus was not a citizen of the empire. He may have been a citizen of Israel, but he did not have citizenship in the empire as many of the ruling elites in the provincial government in Jerusalem did. And he did not have the privilege of knowing he could speak out without putting his own life in jeopardy, especially when he got to Jerusalem. So in that sense, we have an even greater obligation to speak out, to organize campaigns with all the meetings, details, passion and creativity that successful campaigns demand. Here in Pasadena, California, where I live, I've engaged in the struggle for housing justice for over 20 years. And for the past two and a half years, I've been employed as a part-time organizer to do that. In the workshop, I will mention our current campaign to rezone church land for affordable housing throughout our city. There is a severe affordable housing crisis here. Low-income people are being displaced. Public schools are closing because families who send their kids to public schools increasingly can't afford to live here and are moving away. The black and brown communities are hit the hardest. Despite the many campaign successes that we have had over the last 20 years, the increase in affordable housing here has not kept up with the need, and market forces are driving up housing costs dramatically. To meet this need, 10 churches in the city have expressed interest in having affordable housing built on their land. But the zoning is not right for most of them. Trying to change the zoning on a case-by-case basis is not a good solution, because first of all, there's no guarantee that it can be done at any given site. And affordable housing developers often can't and won't take the risk of investing in the pre-development work when the zoning is not already there. But even if it can be done, even in cases where the zoning can be changed, it adds several years and hundreds of thousands of dollars in cost to each project. So we are trying to get all the churches in the city rezoned so that all potential sites are available to meet the severe need for affordable housing. For the past six months, I've been recruiting people to testify at city council meetings in favor of this proposal. And 15 people from Pasadena Mennonite Church have stepped up and testified. So some of what you will hear will be about that campaign, and you will hear from some of those who testified, but also from others who have testified in other settings. The sound in this recording is not always the greatest, but I think with the explanation that I've just given you, you will be able to understand all of it. The last thing that I need to do before getting into the recording of the workshop is to read the text from Matthew that was read in the service because it was not included in the recording. Here is Matthew 4:23-25. "Jesus went throughout Galilee, teaching in their synagogues and proclaiming the good news of the kingdom and curing every disease and every sickness among the people. So his fame spread throughout all Syria, and they brought to him all the sick, those who were afflicted with various diseases and pains, demoniacs, epileptics and paralytics, and he cured them. And great crowds followed him from Galilee, the Decapolis, Jerusalem, Judea and from beyond the Jordan."
So, um, this text from the end of the fourth chapter of Matthew presents a portrait of Jesus that can come across to us in 21st century North America as a sort of traveling Pentecostal preacher, right? He's going around preaching the gospel, healing people, casting out demons, and he gets a large international following. Says, you know, all through Syria. I don't know why they didn't highlight Syria up here. They highlighted all the other places, through Syria, the Decapolis, and from beyond the Jordan. So it's an international following that he got without a television broadcast. But if it sounds like a Pentecostal evangelist to us, it's because of how it's translated for us, what these words mean, and what this activity signifies. In its original context, all this activity would have had huge socio-political significance, even healing and casting out demons. Demons were the minions of Satan, and Satan was identified in Jewish literature of that time as the spirit behind the Roman Empire. Revelation 12 and 13 do that. So casting out demons was a form of liberation. It was an anti-imperial activity. Healing reversed the effects of empire. Roman imperial domination resulted in food shortages. The ruling classes would hoard the food, and they would actually cause food shortages for their own profit, resulting in widespread hunger and nonnutrition, which resulted in high degrees of disability and disease. So healing was a way of reversing that. It was a liberation act, an anti-imperial act. But what I want to focus on is the synagogue part. It says Jesus was preaching and teaching in their synagogues. And so what we imagine is that Jesus is walking into a religious space, a Jewish religious space, and proclaiming a gospel of a new religion. But what these synagogues actually were in the first century, they're different than they are today. In the first century in Judea and Galilee, they were the town governments. They were the town meeting in each town and village. Richard Horsley, a Bible scholar at the University of Massachusetts, describes synagogues in the first century Israel as "a form of self-governance and communal political and religious life." Horsley describes the functions of synagogues this way. He writes, "The local village assembly had a handful of officers who presided at meetings, took care of collecting and distributing goods for the destitute, administered beatings ordered by local courts established on an ad hoc basis by the assemblies, by the synagogues, and attended, for example, to construction projects such as waterworks." So synagogues were governmental bodies that attended to municipal matters. Dr. Jordan Ryan, a Mennonite scholar and assistant professor of New Testament at the University of Dubuque, he described synagogues in the first century as town halls. He's written a whole book about it. That's very expensive, and so I'm still debating whether to buy it or not. So that's what a synagogue was. It was an assembly for local governance in towns and villages, and it was fairly democratic, which is why Jesus finds it useful to spread his message. He's going through the towns and villages of Galilee, spreading the good news of the Kingdom of God, the Kingdom of Heaven, God's new society in the town and village assemblies. And he told his disciples that they would do the same. So the closest analogy that we have to that in our context is speaking at our local city council. So that's something we should be doing, and of course, not just at city councils, but in any spaces where we speak to power or we speak to the wider community, and in any creative way that we can find to do it collectively. Speaking to the local city council and in other community forums is part of our discipleship. And we've been doing that here at PNC just since August. At least 15 people, from my count, from our church or associated with our church, have spoken at city council since August, and some did so again a couple of weeks ago at the planning commission. They were speaking specifically to advocate for rezoning church land for affordable housing. And I've asked a couple of them to share their experience. So I want to ask Kathy Leird, Kathy, she's right here, to come up and share a couple of minutes about her experience. She spoke both at city council this fall and at the planning commission a couple of weeks ago. So Kathy, can you come and share how that went for you, how you felt about it?
Well, Bert did ask me to share much of the things what led me to do that. And since housing is a justice issue near to my heart, but also the justice issues are issues of faith, and as we address the needs of those who have those needs, we're addressing the needs of Jesus and continuing his work on this side of life. But what really led me to do it was Bert asked. And while I hate to reveal too much of my unsavory traits, it's not above me to like give Bert to making housing happen, and GPO can do all the work to, you know, get these things in the council meetings and stuff, and all I have to do is show up and take some credit for it. I'm not above that. But I do know the work of justice when I see it, and when I can march in a parade and be lifted up and carried on by all those who are sharing common goals. Well, it feels good to be part of that. I'm grateful to be asked and to show up when I can, and I've never really to feel guilty when I can't show up. So I've done it twice, and it does take, you know, I prepare a statement because I don't do that great off-script. Says that right here. But this last time I did go off-script some because of the 16 people who spoke before me, and I was so inspired by what they're sharing. And it truly felt like being part of a group project, but the good kind of group project, not the kind of group project where, you know, at school where you're the one who does the work and everyone gets the A, kind of like what I was just talking about earlier. But the kind where you all showed up and you feed off each other's energy and ideas and it builds, it builds life. I even got to change my concluding sentence inspired by Jude Bautista's statement, and I was so grateful for what he shared. So, and one committee person told us she wished we'd all shown up at some other issue that I didn't know about in the past, that it would have made a difference. And she and others implied that having us there did make a difference and did sway things, and if it didn't get people to change their minds, it gave the support to those who wanted to do the right thing in the vote anyway. So as we continue the work of Jesus, simply peacefully together, one meeting at a time, take it from me, it's easy to just show up when you can.
So a couple of other people I asked couldn't be here. One of those who spoke was Isabel Mathia, and she did it both times from Chicago, because all the city council meetings and other commission meetings right now, for the last two years, have been on Zoom. So it's actually really convenient to speak up, and you can speak up, you don't have to travel to Pasadena, you can speak up from another state. So, but this is what Isabel sent me. She couldn't, she's got an event that fits with the service. She said, "I spoke because I wanted to help. I wanted to make the world better. I want to uplift people. I want to experience more of the kingdom here on earth. And while writing these things, it's easy putting them into practice is another story. In truth, I did this because I had the opportunity. All I did was commit less than three hours of my time total, and it felt amazing. It felt like it did something. I realized I had something to say. These systems that feel so much bigger than me, and these official rooms that feel so scary to me are just made up of people and walls. And it felt incredible to hear other people speak, and it made me realize I'm not alone, that other people who are smarter than I are doing work, and all I have to do is follow and be willing. I just have to show up and say yes." That was Isabel. And then another person that spoke was Sue Park Herr, and she's actually here today, but in the nursery. So I have to read, I'm reading her statement too. So she says, "My family," this is interesting because she tells her story, which is really crucial, and we'll get back to that later. "My family has lived in Pasadena for the last seven years. We were able to secure a lease for the four-bedroom house because we knew the landlord's daughter. We have a monthly lease, so we think it's a miracle that we have lived here for so long. A couple of months ago, my landlord texted me to call her when I had the chance. My heart palpitated, wondering if she would raise our below-market rent or ask us to move out. Many renters know and live with this feeling of uncertainty, of housing insecurity that may require us not only to move, but to change schools for our children and our connection to the land. When I was asked to speak at city council to show my support of rezoning religious land for affordable housing, I spoke as a renter who needs affordable housing, and buying a home seems unimaginable. I spoke as a pastor who believes that we need to reimagine how our church buildings can help and come alongside the most vulnerable in our communities, by literally building a community. At the city council meeting, I felt frustrated that I wasn't able to speak about everything in the allotted time, but there were other voices from the community who shared their concerns with the same goal. What I couldn't share, others did from a different perspective. I felt like we were singing different verses of the same song, and the council, city council heard our message. I felt more empowered and proud to be part of the collective voice, a prayer for real change." So those are examples of some people. So Dan is going to come and pass the mic around and let us invite other people to share their experiences.
So the question now is, how many of you have spoken at any kind of event, any kind of open public forum, shared your opinion or spoken on any topic? Raise your hands. Okay, there's a lot of people. That's awesome. And you guys online, raise your hands too. That's good. That's good. Who over here, who's going to be the first victim? Karen, did you raise your hand? You did. How about, can you share what you felt when you were speaking and how, you know, like what, what did that feel like for you?
Well, right before I started speaking, they cut the time from three minutes to two minutes. So I was frantically editing my words, and I almost got, you know, kind of gonged at the end. But it was a good process to just write, as Bert said, from your story. It gave me a story to tell on behalf of others.
All right, thanks. Evelyn, did you raise your hand? Oh, good. Now, were you scared?
Absolutely.
And then after you did it, were you still scared?
No relief.
So that's one of the things that I think that everybody's intimidated to speak in front of a group of people, no matter what, right? And even online, it gets like, oh, man, I'm gonna get up and I'm gonna say something. But the good thing about being online, they can't see your face. They have no idea how nervous you are, and you can get on and you can say, say your piece and say what you need to say. Lisa?
I had the experience sharing, testifying before the State Board of Education on school fundings many years ago. And one of the things that really struck me about it was, we had like over 100 people from different areas, all speaking to support the same thing. So even though all of our testimonies didn't necessarily sound unique in themselves, but it was just like one right after the other, after the other. And then like one little person in between being like, "We think this is a bad idea." And then like 50 more people supporting, and we actually negotiated ahead of time. We had, I think, 12 people in our group, and we said, "Will you give us 12 consecutive minutes instead of one minute per person?" So we like did kind of this choreographed back and forth speaking thing, like each person had a part, but they, they let us like do all 12 minutes, which is a long time, not as opposed to just like your little snippet of time. And so if anyone wants to go to Sacramento and do that, it's joy.
All right, thanks, Lisa. Frank, I see your hand up. Will you share how you felt and what your experience was when you were doing your thing?
Sure, we can share. We'll do 30 seconds each. I did it maybe in early December, I believe. I was doing it at the very end of the session. And so one thing that was powerful that Bert had prepared me for was that there are also people speaking about other issues in the community, such as policing and the murder of Anthony McLean by the police that happened in August of 2020. And so Bert said, hey, if you want, you can also like mention your support and your encouragement of them, because that also kind of like maintains that energy that Kathy was talking about. And so I said that, and then I connected that somehow, I don't remember my exact words, but to housing and how, you know, the dangers of having an excessive police presence.
Five seconds.
Better. Affordable housing and making, you know, it being very important to have churches coming alongside the community to create affordable housing, but also to consider how that's one step out of many to create a community that's healthy and whole. And so that was just very powerful to me, to be able to see multiple members of the community, Christians and non-Christians alike, coming together for, for the community.
I would just say it was really easy and thanks to Bert, and it felt really good. So go for it.
Right, anybody else online or here in the sanctuary want to share?
I started speaking at the Whittier City Council about three years ago. There was a lot of movement, hate in the community towards our unhoused population, and various encampments were forming and being evicted and having their, their things taken down and confiscated by both officials and by local, particularly one local vigilante. And since then, in fact, I even drove some people from one of the encampments to the city council to allow him to testify before the city council. And since some of those problems have been alleviated a bit, advocating for housing. And so I learn every time, but the city council knows me. They know that I'm, that housing is my number one issue, and it really makes me feel like I can make a difference.
Thanks, Susan. Mary Ann, your hands up.
Yeah, I would just say that for anyone like maybe a little too intimidated to speak in front of a group, you don't have to have like all the words and have thought about it for hours. Just whatever you can say to add into the chorus of voices is impactful. I'm not a great speaker. You don't have to be a great speaker. Just speak from your heart and with your passion.
That's great, definitely. So, oh, Rob, did you want to share?
So I thought I'd share just at a little different angle. So influenced by this community and having spoken at city council, I worked it into an assignment that I gave to my seminary students. So they have to go to a city council meeting as part of learning their neighborhood. And, and so that's coming up, but that flows out of the work of this community.
That's awesome. Force people into it.
My name's Bob, and of course, my glory days are behind me. You all know that. So about 10 or 12 years ago, I went to a, a meeting for the electricity company here in Pasadena, and I remember Donna was there, their integrated resources planning project. And they were just getting ready to sign a new 20-year contract to get all their electricity from coal. And a couple of us said that maybe wasn't such a good idea. And I didn't particularly think we had much effect, but then like two years later, I heard somebody at city council say, well, you know, two years ago, there was this public meeting about the electricity, and we found out how much the people really care about this. So it made a bigger difference than I had thought at the time.
Great. Looks like we've got rich. And, oh, and Kathleen.
Yeah, it's, it's been a while since I spoke, but I spoke at city council meetings and school board meetings. My most recent one, I think, was at a Historical Resources Commission meeting. But one of the things I learned over the years covering school boards and city councils and in speaking to them, number one, yeah, when I spoke, I was nervous all the time. Number two, I found that it helps if you have one thing in particular, rather than a broad range of things, focus in on one thing that you want to concentrate on, and also try to make it speak about something that you'd like to see in action for, that the group you're speaking to can do something about.
Great. All right, Kathleen?
Hey, I have spoken at the Camarillo City Council, and those of you who know me know that we moved from the Pasadena area up here to Ventura County. And I really want to echo the thing of feeling like you were singing another verse. But the session that I spoke at was about having Camarillo not be a sanctuary city. And there were a bunch of people who had been going up and down the state and coming to city council meetings, spreading a lot of hate. And it was kind of a lovely thing for those of us who actually live here, to meet each other and see each other and recognize that we cared about the same things and that we could sing together on this topic. And just it allowed me to feel a solidarity with other people in the community who I might not have connected with before.
Thanks, Kathleen. All right, anybody else here? We can probably close up this section. I will end this time by saying that I have it with good information that it is very annoying to these different groups when people come on and when there is a big meeting. No, and that can be good and bad, but if you are speaking specifically to something that they have authority over and they have the ability to change, rather than just going in and ranting, that is where you can actually get them to, you know, to not just ignore you because they can't really deal with it, but to come in with a very concrete suggestion, I think, works really well. And we'll have more information in coming weeks about how you can craft your story in a way that might be compelling work. So I'm going to turn it over to Andrea right now, and I'll go back to my seat in the back of the class.
Hi, everyone. So speaking of being intimidated to speak publicly, I'm going to be reading off my phone. So I just want to quickly say hi. Nice to meet you all, by the way. My name's Andrea. I'm a community organizer with LA Voice, and I'm so lucky to be working with Pasadena Manonite Church. I've had the pleasure of meeting quite a few of you so far, and I just can't wait to keep meeting more of you. But so connected to what we were all just talking about, what we just heard was several really beautiful accounts of people bearing witness and speaking truth to power. And to me, the key thing in all of these examples is that everybody shared a story. They shared their story. They moved from their private shame to public pain. And when we share with others, that's where we learn that we don't have individual problems to face alone, but we rather have systematic issues that we need to confront together. And so in two weeks, on February 27, I'll actually be hosting a training and a workshop here during service on just that. It'll be on encountering yourself and encountering others. We'll get a chance to practice telling our own stories, to be able to move from private shame to public pain. So we can do that together to help create a better world, a world as we want it, rather than a world as it is right now. So thank you so much. I really loved hearing everyone's testimonies. It was really exciting, and I'm really looking forward to the training in two weeks. Yeah, I'll pass it back to Bert now. Thank you.
Yeah, so I hope people will be back in two weeks. When Andrea leads us in that workshop, I've seen the PowerPoint. It's really good. And she's got a lot of wisdom. Organizing is its own wisdom. And we need to learn that as a church. And so people like Andrea can show us how to do it and give us a lot of the stuff that's been learned by people that do it over the years. So the 15 people I was referring to that have spoken since August, we heard people have been speaking recently about other things and in other city councils. But the people that have, the 15 that I was talking about since August have been speaking in support of rezoning church land for affordable housing. So I've mentioned this before, but in case you don't know, there are about 10 churches in Pasadena that have expressed interest in partnering with an affordable housing developer to have affordable housing built on their land. And but almost all of them are not zoned for it. And if you go on a case-by-case basis, first of all, you usually won't even happen. But if you, even if you can get it to happen, it'll take several years, and it'll add hundreds of thousands of dollars to the cost. But if we just rezone across a whole jurisdiction, then we can lower the cost, so we can build more, we can get it built faster. So that's what we've been trying to do in Pasadena for the last two years. We thought we would have this done a year ago, but then the new mayor delayed it for a year. Then I was recently thinking that we would have it done in a few months, like by early March. But this last Planning Commission meeting is showing that it'll probably take a May, June, maybe even later. So the road to justice is long, and it involves a lot of meetings and lots of delays and lots of reassessing and strategizing. And it involves people, a lot of people, speaking up relentlessly, over and over. But perhaps speaking is not your thing. Maybe writing is your thing. We need emails. It used to be always asked for emails. Just recently, I've been emphasizing speaking. But we need emails, and we need them every time. Every time there's a city council meeting, the planning commission meeting, this gets on the agenda. I know some of you wrote, I know Grace wrote an email this last time. So that was really helpful to have emails there as well. Or maybe speaking and writing is not your thing. You know, we've had three public events in this campaign. Maybe showing up in person is your thing. When the city council opens up again, we'll need people to show up actually in person. I just on Zoom. At one event, we had food, we had storytelling, we had dance. Maybe that's your thing. A number of years ago, Bob will remember this. We testified before city council, some of us from this church testified at Pasadena City Council. This is like 20 years ago. And we had three minutes, and so we did a three-minute skit with puppets, with cardboard puppets. We're now thinking about going into the parks and getting the recorded testimony from people who are experiencing homelessness and taking those recordings to city council. So testifying for justice can be done in many ways. And it's a collective thing that we do together with all our different talents, passions. The road to justice is long. It's often hard. And victory is not assured, but it can be fun and creative. And we know that if we stand together and speak together, we can achieve great things. We've done it before. Let's persevere and do it again. It's what Jesus did.